Was that a cat I saw flying off your desk, Brad?
Greg, it's 5:30. Before I call the meeting to order, can you give the Zoom speech?
I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm Greg Elliott and the interim city administrator for the city. I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests a roll call. This is the pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city convention to discuss various issues and topics. Much of the meeting, we ask that participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting. Members will be invited at that time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. We talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. This occurs during our meeting tonight. We will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of meeting to law enforcement for investigation, hope to conduct their meeting free of any sort of interruption. But we will temporarily shut down the meeting if that happens. Thank you all for participating. And Mayor, we're meeting over the roll call.
I now call to order the pre-meeting study session for Monday, August 3, 2020. May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Heed.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Robert.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
All commission members present.
Thank you. Greg, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first guest tonight is Sue Feinberg. She's our regional representative with MERS, here to give us sort of a high-level overview of our 2019 valuation report. That report was in your packets. Hopefully, we're going to be able to share it on the screen here as well as she speaks. And I'll turn it over to Sue.
Well, thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see everyone. I think a few of you are new, so let me just kind of give you a quick introduction. I'm the regional manager for Southeast Michigan. And I have, here we go. I was seeing some nice cars in the street there for a minute. I have been with MERS for 15 and a half years. The municipal employees' retirement system separated from the state back in 1996, so we are a not-for-profit entity and we administer pensions for Michigan governmental entities. Currently, we administer pension plans for over 850 municipalities within the state of Michigan. So every year, we actually manage your defined benefit and your defined contribution plans. So every year, the actuaries gather all the data from the prior year and put together a report that gives you your wages on a going-forward basis. So it's going to project your wages going into 2021. So tonight, I thought we would just kind of go through this actuarial evaluation. This came out in June. It comes up by the end of June every year, and it's a snapshot of your 2019 year. So everything that happened in 2019 is going to be captured in this. Keep in mind, anything that's happened this year will not. That will be captured next year. So if we start out, we started through executive summary on page one. What I, my plan was, is just to go through this kind of on a high level, so feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions or, you know, something doesn't make sense so that we can talk through it. I'm completely welcome to this being and would like it to be a conversation. So when we start out, your funding level went down. So from 18 to 19, your funding level went down 3%. There's a few reasons for that. One of them is primarily due to the fact that MERS does an experience study every five years, and during that experience study, the actuaries take a look at the experience within the plan to see if it's actually meeting the assumption that they're using. And then they do a lot of research across the country, best practices. They look at what's going on throughout the whole state of Michigan, and they look at our particular municipalities within our system. And then they make recommendations to our board. A few years ago, we had readjusted our rate of return assumption from 8 to 7.75. Again, with all things considered, you know, everyone is becoming more conservative, including us. And so they lowered that rate of return assumption to 7.35. So by doing that, it lowered your funding level, and it does increase your assets because your assets are now valued at a lower amount because we're not assuming we're going to make as much investment income on your assets. There's a couple other reasons. One of them is some market losses. You know, last year was a good year. We finished around four and a half, 14 and a half percent. The year before, the fourth quarter really took us down, and we finished, I think, at a negative 2. And so any times there's gains or losses in the market, those are smoothed over five years. So we're still feeling some losses, so you also felt that. One of the other contributing factors is the fact that your plan is a very mature plan. You have a lot of retirees that are on your payroll. And so the assets coming in, you've got a little bit right now, more assets going out. So let's go ahead and take a look then at page two. This is projecting what your required employer contributions are going to be as of July 1 of 2021. So if you look over to the far-right corner, you'll see that, and I believe that the city is paying no phase-in now. So the phase-in and the no phase-in is confusing. That is just the difference between the assumption changes. You can phase the impact out over a five-year period, or you can pay really what should be being billed and paid currently. So with the no phase-in rate, you'll see that your contributions are going to be going up. The monthly increase is around $29,000 on a going-forward basis starting next year. Underneath that box, it reflects all of your different divisions and what the employees are contributing towards their plans. Moving on, the next notable table is going to be on page six. This is a table that you're going to want to look at. Nope, keep going. Page six, a little bit farther. For budgeting purposes, this table can be a little bit confusing, so let me walk you through it. And that's due to the assumption changes. So when I'm talking about the five-year experience study, the fact that's reflected in that top box, that 7.35 rate of return assumption. Last year, that was in the middle box because it was kind of giving you an idea what's coming down the pipe. This year, that assumption is being used for your 2021 rates. So again, starting July 1 of 2021, that very top line of that box, if you go all the way across to the right, you see that that's going to be your total employer contribution, that 2.255. Now for 2022, we're going to be using the second set of assumptions that were adjusted in the five-year experience study, and that was changing our mortality table. So we made a change to our demographic assumptions and went to a generational banding table, which hopefully going forward will be a little bit more accurate and so that we don't have to make such big adjustments to the mortality table. This mortality table, they incorporated the change a year after the rate of return assumption so that they didn't hit, you know, at the very same time. The impact on people's plans was different. It is different based on, you know, the demographics of your plan, you know, the age of the participants in your plan. So this is going to be that middle section, what you're going to want to look at when you're looking forward at your budget. It has your 2021 contribution line in there. Just know that they put that line in there so that you could see the difference. If indeed, we were using the new mortality table along with the rate of return assumption, that's how much it would have impacted your rates. But starting 2022, that second box is what you're going to be budgeting for, okay? So you're going to see your overall funding level is going to go down a little bit. It's going to wind up going down to around 60, and then it's going to start working its way back up again. But that is the box that you're going to want to budget with, starting on that second line at 2.5. That bottom box is just simply for a lot of our groups who would rather use much more conservative assumptions. We're just showing a 5.35% rate of return assumption for people who do want to budget at that rate. Sometimes people like land in the middle, you know, at a 6.35, just cut it right in, you know, half the other one and come to the middle and budget under those, that set of figures. So that, that is the reason for that. Now, if we take a look at the next page, this is just going to show you long-term, okay? Where are you going to be and how quickly you're going to be bringing your funding level up? So the graph on the top, that funded percentage, that is showing you, you're going to want to look at that orange dotted line because that is going to be all of the assumptions incorporated. So the blue line is for this year, but that orange one is going to be the line to follow going forward. So you can see where your funding level is, and then you can see that it is, it's gradually going to be going up. That green line indicates, you know, when you're going to be 100% funded. If you do nothing but make the minimum contributions that we're billing you. You do nothing else. That's just minimum contributions with all the assumptions. That's what they're predicting. Now, the chart underneath, it gives you an idea of what the contribution level is going to be. So you can see, again, using the orange dots, your contributions as your liabilities go up, continue to go up until around 20, what is that, 2040, 2039? They're gradually going to go up before you hit that 100% funded point because once your plan is funded, you've got rid of that unfunded liability, and you're just paying the normal cost of any actives that are still in the plan. The next table down, table one, breaks down the employer contributions. And I, I think this is important to look at because this shows you on the top, on the far-left corner, what the total normal cost is. What that means, if you look at division one, your general division, that is the cost for you to offer the benefit in, you know, in all the provisions to the active employees that are still in, in division one. That's the cost of them accruing one more year of service credit. That's 10.55% of their payroll is what we're going to be billing you. And then it goes right on down to the police. And you can see, you know, some of the lower costs are the divisions that have been set up with, you know, lower benefits going forward. So all your divisions have actually closed except for your TPOAM, Division 22. That's the only division that they still have actives going into. The rest of your divisions have already made changes to their benefits, and new hires are going into the defined contribution plan. You've got new hires coming in, so you'll be paying them in the defined contribution plan, but you will be continuing to contribute into the DV plan until all those actives have went through the plan and the plan is 100% funded. We move on to page 10, which starts with table two. These are the provisions in each one of the divisions that the city has. These are the provisions in each one of the divisions that the city has. So for example, if we take a look at Division one, that general division, and we see that it's closed, so there's new hires going, no new hires going into that division. They have a two point two five percent multiplier. Normal age sixty is a default for MERS. If someone is vested and they leave, they can start collecting their benefit for whatever years they're vested for on the age sixty. And their formula is going to be an average of three years. So that's their FAC. So basically, what we do is we take a formula when they get ready to retire. So we're going to use that multiplier, the two point two five multiplier. We're going to multiply that, and this is if they've not their ear vesting, we're going to multiply that times their actual years and months of service times their FAC, which is their best and highest consecutive thirty-six months in their career. And that's going to give you what their annual benefit is going to be. And then that's divided up into twelve months and they receive that on a monthly basis for the rest of their lives. The employees are contributing four percent into that plan. And as of January one of 2017, anybody going into that plan went into the defined contribution plan. The next one, and a lot of your divisions did this, so I just, I want to point this out. They bridged down. So for the police division, they had a two and a half percent multiplier. They bridged that down to a one point eight oh percent multiplier. And that was on January thirty-first of 2017. What that bridge does is it basically bridges down the multiplier. So for someone who say had been there for ten years, when the bridge was implemented and adapted on that date going forward, the rest of the service that they accrue through the City of Adrian is going to be calculated at a one point eight oh percent multiplier instead of the two point five. Then when they get ready to retire, those two separate calculations are added together and that's what their benefit is. And the city did that to reduce cost. They have vesting at ten years, so they have to work their ten years before they can vest. Also, at age fifty with twenty-five years of service, they're eligible to collect a, a full pension. And any current employees are paying eight percent into that benefit. You can see just moving down each one of the divisions, you know, what their provisions are because they definitely vary. I mean, you see Division eleven, that's the only division that is still open for the dispatchers. They have a one point seven oh percent multiplier, no early retirement rider. They have to be age sixty and they have to have ten years of service credit to vest. And they also pay in three percent towards their benefit. Any questions so far? Okay. We can continue to go through those, but I think that you've got the hang of that now, how all the different provisions work. The next table, table three, which is on, starts on page fourteen. This is a breakdown of each one of the divisions on the prior page. And it shows you how many actives are still in that division. So for example, again, if we take a look at the first division, we take a look at the general division. As of the end of 2019, December thirty-first, you had twenty-five actives in the plan, sixteen former vested members. What that means is those are people that were vested at the time when they left the city, but they're not eligible to start collecting. So when they reach age sixty, they will be eligible for a benefit. In that division, there's seventy-four retirees and/or their beneficiaries that are currently collecting. We always show you the year before, so that next column shows you 2018, just that you can see what the shift is. So there were, you were down two active employees that left. Over to the far right, it'll show you too what the average age of those demographics are to give you an idea of how much service they credit, service credit they have and when they'll be able to start collecting it. And then you can just go right down and you can see in your, in your different divisions, the police have fourteen actives, fire still has eight, steel workers are fourteen. There's no one in the dispatcher's division. Eleven in the general, which is the linked division to your Division one. We go all the way to the end of this, this just gives you an idea of your plan. This is what the actuaries would consider a very mature plan. So that means that you have quite a few more retirees and/or beneficiaries than you do active still in the plan. And this is bound to happen with an older plan and also a plan where your new hires are going into, you know, a different plan, they're going into the defined contribution. So you can see that you're actually, you were down one, one retiree. You lost one retiree and/or their beneficiary. But it shows you exactly, you know, what the age range for your retirees are, is an aggregate, which is seventy-two and your active employees is forty-five years old. So let's take a look then. So I think this is a great table, table five, which is on page seventeen. This is a great inflow and outflow of cash. So if we take a look, this is a ten-year historical look. So if we look at the very bottom of this graph and we look at 2019, that first column, that one point six two two, six eight one, that's the minimum requirement that MERS billed the city and that's what they paid. The city made an additional contribution, that five oh four, eight seventy-eight. The employees, the next column over, contributed that three thirty-seven, eight eight six. Now, the investment income that you earned on your assets was that one point eight six nine, two sixty-one. Your assets were at just over forty-one million, so forty-one, one twenty-four. Pension benefits going out to that group of retirees was that four million, you know, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven eighty-six. So that's a lot of money going out for retiree benefits. So when you look at, why, why aren't we moving the needle more quickly? You know, we're paying what MERS is billing us. We should be bringing our funding level up, which can be extremely frustrating. Keep in mind that by law, how we bill you is we bill you for any of the actives that are still in the plan, for them to accrue one more year of service credit. And then we have that unfunded liability piece. That unfunded liability piece is amortized over currently nineteen years. That piece is continuing to move down one year at a time until your plan is funded. And that's also increasing your cost because we're taking that amount of money and we're shortening every year that you have to pay on it. Now, when you make additional contributions, you know, that definitely helps. But that by law is the way that we bill you. So making just your minimum contribution, sometimes you can go down before you start to go up. So when we're taking a look at this page and we look at even with the additional contributions that were made into the plan, you still fell short by just over two hundred thousand dollars in what went out in your benefits to your retirees. And some of your retirees have a cost of living provision in them. So also know that a lot of these retirees, every year, their pension gets a little bit higher. Now, we're obviously accounting for that overall, but it is, it is something to think about because you are going to see, even if you didn't have any new retirees join your group, you're going to see that costs go up a little bit more every year as they get that. I think most of them have a two and a half percent nine compounding COLA. I hate to take you back, but let's, let's do that. Let's go back to page eight.
Sue, can we stay, this is Commissioner Watson, can we stay on that table for a second?
Yeah.
So, so if I'm reading this properly, over the last four years, we've made contributions in excess or additional contributions north of one point two million dollars. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's those in the additional contribution category.
And if you were rendering an opinion on this, that's probably a healthy and prudent thing for a city to do when they're in a situation like ours, right?
Definitely.
Yeah. And so, so that's helping us to, to reduce that, that pension deficit. Even though, as you said, you know, there, there's going to be dips and troughs and things like that, that, that it's, it's just the way of the market or the way of the actuarial assumptions, right?
Hmm.
Go ahead.
Yeah. When you're factoring things like market loss, which you have no control over.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we are, you know, making changes to the rate of return assumption. Whenever you reduce a rate of return assumption, you know, obviously, you know, your assets have less value and it affects your costs that you're paying into the plan and also brings your funding level down.
Sure.
So you've got some things working against you too.
Yeah, it's like we're running with a parachute on. And then, and with this all in mind, you said you have an amortized, amortized balance of our unfunded that's included in our monthly install, yeah, in our, in our periodically billed installments. So, so, so with that in mind, we are chewing away at that deficit in a, in an agreeable timeframe, which is twenty years. Is that right?
Currently, you're at nineteen.
Okay, so, so I mean, we started at twenty years and we, we've gnawed one of those years off. So, so, so really, we have been following the rules as well as all the, the billings and gone above and beyond by contributing an extra one point two million over the last four years, right?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all, yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure I understood this chart quite right. Thanks.
No, I, I appreciate that. And actually, I was, when I was going to take you back, kind of ties into what you're talking about. So I would like to go back to, I think it's page eight.
Sue, Sue, and this is Commissioner Help. Also kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Watson with the excess contributions to the, to the plan, do you think it was prudent for us to work together with our employees and open up contracts to reduce that multiplier that we'll see down the road when it comes from two point five to one point eight? Can you tell the public how significant that is from a benefit standpoint? How working together with your labor unions trying to get that multiplier down to see a long-term effect on that when it comes to multiplier?
Yeah, the city worked really hard on that. That was, I know that was tough negotiating. But what it does, honestly, to bridge down someone's benefit is really the only way to reduce liability. Because in a plan, the actuaries are making assumptions and this is how they come up with what the cost needs to be to fund the plan. They're looking at what everybody's provisions are, right? They're projecting how long they're going to be working. Of all the wages that you're reporting to us, you know, we're also, they're taking considerations and raises and they're calculating and making the best assumption they can as to what that person is going to be collecting, right? So they're putting a value and a cost on that. By reducing that multiplier, it reduced the liability for the city. Because in my example, if someone had worked ten years, so if they wind up working a total of twenty years, the actuaries have been making the assumption that the whole ten-year, the whole twenty years of their career would be based on the two and a half percent multiplier. When then you bridge the employee down, so the employee is now going to receive a smaller pension. But what that did was it reduced the liability for the city because now the city doesn't have to be, you know, responsible for paying, you know, as much of a projected cost as we had for that pension. So it can be a very difficult decision and I know it was for the city, but it really was one of the only ways for them to reduce their costs because, you know, with unfunded liability, it's, it's, once it starts accruing, we've got to make sure that it's paid down so the employees can receive their, you know, their benefits. But it's, it is, that's one of the only ways. And I applaud the, the city because again, I know it was a lot of work, but it did reduce the liability for the city on a going-forward basis. And just to give you an idea of how big that liability piece is, if you look on that page eight, and I apologize because I kind of skipped over that unintentionally. When I was pointing out what the normal cost is, if you look down at the bottom of that particular table, it shows you that first column, that three hundred and twenty-one, two seventy-six, that's the normal cost for all your current active employees earning another year of service credit. So if your plan was a hundred percent funded, that would be the cost on a monthly basis. That next column over, that's your unfunded liability. So that one point nine million, you're paying off over a fixed period of time. So that's what we're shrinking. We're shrinking that down one year at a time. So what we're saying to you is if you do nothing other than make, you know, your required contributions to MERS, we are putting you on a path to become a hundred percent funded in nineteen years. You know, we know that we're using the best assumptions we can and we make adjustments. But if it was theoretically in a perfect world and all the experience met these assumptions, the city would be funded in nineteen years without making additional contributions or doing things like that. Making additional contributions is a great thing because it just gives you more assets to earn money on, you know, and help slowly move that needle a little bit more quickly in the other way. So yes, you are on the right path.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see. Which table would be? On page eighteen, this just breaks your liabilities down by each individual division. So you can see, you know, what the liabilities are for, example, your general division. You know, those active employees and that's everybody that's currently in there, that's six point four million. The former vested employees, employees who have vested, who will be able to collect a benefit when they turn sixty at one point six. And it also shows you out of that division what retirees and/or their beneficiaries are currently collecting. Pending refunds, that's employees who, if they left, you know, there's, they can take their employee contributions with them and forfeit any benefit from the city. And so each particular division, when we talk about how well the city is funded, that's an aggregate of all your divisions together. This breaks it down by individual divisions. So you can see that that general division is sixty-one percent funded. Now, there's a couple of divisions that are overfunded and that is due to the fact that when we bill you, the city chose to be, have a blended billing, which means we take the closed division and the open division and they bill you. So it winds up causing a credit on the newer division because the normal cost is lower on that division. So what you can do, it's just a manner of letting us know, is we can move those assets into the, the divisions that were closed, just to even it out. The next few tables are really historical tables, breaking it down, you know, like where the funding level was, what your liabilities and assets were. And then it breaks it down by each individual division. Has that? So all the different divisions, what their funding levels were. Probably the next table of interest. And this is something that really, sorry, I'm still scrolling. It's all the way down to page forty-four, which breaks down all the provisions in each one of the divisions. So this is your historical look. City of Adrian came into MERS back in nineteen forty-six, which was when the state first rolled out this plan. And then it shows you what the benefits they came in with. And then if you go up and look at the history, you can see, you know, over time, the benefit enhancements that were made throughout. And a lot of these provisions being increased without paying for the cost upfront were the things that, you know, pulled the funding level down on the plan was making improvements within these divisions. improvements within these divisions and not funding them, kind of, um, just rolling it into the liability and the amortization. Um, since then, we've made a lot of policy changes, so things like that um, do not occur anymore because people have to be at least 80% funded to make any type of enhancement that's going to cause a liability in their plan and then that has to be paid for upfront to continue to move people in the right direction instead of letting people go backwards. So taking a look at each one of these divisions is usually pretty interesting because you can see pretty regularly, you know, what was going on, what enhancements were being made. So it's hard to get ahead, even when you're making your contributions, when you're creating more liability. The last, let's see, we have just information on state reporting and measurements on how they come up with some of their ratios, um, liability payroll, uh, liability of market value assets and things like that. And then on page 52 is just all of the numbers that the Treasury Department needs for the city to do their, um, reporting to Treasury, which is Form 5572. So the state of Michigan now requires everyone who has a defined benefit plan to fill that form out. They will flag you if you are under 60% funded and ask you to fill out another form of corrective action plan. So the city is not there. So they won't have to do anything like that, but that's just Treasury's way of trying to make sure that everybody has a plan, that they're making changes to their plan, if they're, you know, if they're poorly funded. And that they're moving in the right direction. And they do know that any plan that, um, the municipal employees retirement system manages on the defined benefit side have a fixed period of time for that unfunded liability to be paid over time. That's kind of a high overview of it, questions that I can answer. And I know it's frustrating when you set up a defined contribution plan for, you know, your new hires to come into when you still have this plan. Just know that setting defined contribution for new hires is a great plan forward so that you've got a plan where you won't run the risk of having any unfunded liability because you're going to be paying that settlement in. And then once that employee leaves the city or starts to collect, you know, the city no longer has to pay towards their benefit. Both defined benefit plan, you know, it is a little bit different because that benefit is defined instead of the contribution going in being defined.
Yes, Commissioner Help, um, I'm sorry, you want to go, um, no, I just think that, uh, you answered all my questions, like Commissioner Watson asked about the 1.2 million dollar budget surplus we put on it since 2015. Also, that multiplier, um, bridging that, that we'll see a lot of savings and, uh, it will start correcting itself down the road. We knew once we did that, um, that it'd be a couple of years before we would see, you know, the significance of that decision. So, and, uh, it was the city employees leadership and also the city commission that also worked together to get that done. So, um, you answered all the questions I had, thank you.
Thank you. And this, this is Commissioner Roberts and I wasn't on the commission when all of that took place, but I'd really like to thank Commissioners Help, Strayer, Watson and the employees for doing all that they could at that time. I did have one question, it's on page three. It's right under where it says MERS strongly encourages employers to contribute more than the minimum. Am I reading this correctly to say if we wanted to do, to accelerate and have and be fully funded in 10 years, we'd have to increase our monthly contributions by nearly a hundred thousand dollars?
Yep, that would be reaching the 100% mark nine years sooner than this report indicates.
Okay, I thought that's what I was reading and I wanted to be sure that I wasn't misunderstanding that. Yeah, okay. No, I think you answered the rest of my questions, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Anything else?
There's nothing else, I thank you, Sue, for the presentation, that was very helpful.
Good, um, I think, I know Greg, you've got my email address. If you do think of any questions, um, please, you know, reach out to the city. Heather has all my contact information, you know, feel free to reach out with questions at any time. All right, well, thank you for having me.
So Mayor, next we're looking at, uh, a little different presentation on the PACE program. You may remember the PACE program, uh, back before the pandemic, we had a presentation by Lena Green on that, um, little confusing, uh, I would say to most who heard it. But since that time, uh, one of our newer businesses, Euclid, uh, new to the state, but new to our town, were, uh, building out a couple of the old Ventures buildings over on, uh, Center Street there. Uh, had reached out to me and expressed an interest in utilizing that program for some of the renovations that they're doing. And what I asked them to do is come tonight, Brian Weedmire from Euclid has been in touch with me and I don't know whether he's on the call here, he may be one of the callers. But I also see Todd Williams from Lena Green, uh, is in attendance right now. And so the two of them asked back to, up to you in more concrete terms about how Euclid would like to use this the, uh, the renovations that they want to do over there, uh, at their site. And Brian, are you, are you on the call?
Actually, Dell Collins is here, I'm the COO.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, you know, I will, I will be taking that call and of course we'll let Todd set up his presentation. And then we will, uh, you know, make sure we answer any questions and clarify our position on this. I do want to thank, uh, you know, the entire city council for giving us a voice here, allowing us an opportunity to, you know, lay out again the PACE program. And then from Euclid's perspective, you know, how important this really is to us with our move into Adrian. So, uh, you know, I want to thank all of you for that. So again, this is Dell Collins and Todd, if you're there, I'll kind of default to you maybe to begin to go ahead and, uh, you know, kind of go back over the PACE program for the entire team and then help bring some clarification there.
I'm here Dell, thank you very much, uh, Mayor and members of the commission. You know, thanks for having me. You have on your screen, uh, what hopefully will be a little bit of a simple document, uh, to, to talk about PACE and talk about the process of starting a PACE district uh, for the city of Adrian, uh, with Lena Green Michigan. Really, we meant this as kind of a guide document for these kinds of conversations so that, you know, hopefully we don't leave you confused. But please, at any time, if uh, throw out the questions that you have or points that you may have been confused on in the past and we're, we're happy to, or I'm happy to discuss them. As Greg mentioned, I'm with Lena Green Michigan, I'm general counsel for them. Big part of what I do is talking with local jurisdictions and clearing up any issues. And, you know, so right off the top, you know, from a high level standpoint, PACE is property assessed, clean energy was enacted at the state level. And the, the law allows for any local jurisdiction, uh, whether it's a county, township or municipality to form a PACE district. It's an opt-in program essentially, uh, and it's a, an economic development program. Once you have the district in place, your commercial property owners are able to voluntarily, you know, borrow money and have it secured by an assessment against their property. And so it's, it's really, it's a huge carrot for lenders to come into the marketplace and to lend money to your commercial property developments that are going on. Uh, and it's a huge carrot for the property owners and the method that they be paying back and the fact that the security interest ties into the property itself. And so it's really geared towards, you know, retrofits and redevelopments, making buildings more energy efficient, uh, more habitable. Frankly, sometimes it's just common sense projects of, of simple swap outs of, you know, a 50-year-old furnace that was supposed to last 30 years. Uh, and so it's a great way to fund some of those, so. Any questions that feel, sometimes like I ramble on and don't know if I get to, to the point of where you, where you may have issues and concerns.
Todd, can you explain your role, what Lena Green does versus, uh, you're not an entity of the state, obviously, you're a private company, but you're facilitating the implementation of this on what basis?
We are a private company, we partner with our member jurisdictions, currently we have 44, uh, maybe 45, I've lost count, we've got about three different jurisdictions that are in process right now. When you enact a program, a PACE program, you're able to either self-administer uh, or partner with other jurisdictions and have them administered by a third party and that's what we do. Uh, we really built out a marketplace, uh, to try and make this as easy for jurisdictions to plug into, uh, not only to get access to contractors that we've helped train in what PACE is, but also to get access to lenders that are, you know, of a national footprint that we've attracted into Michigan. Uh, and we really do try to make PACE as easy as possible for the city of Adrian uh, or Wayne County or any of the jurisdictions that we work with, uh, to do the heavy lifting on the front end of forming the district by providing all of the resolutions and the draft form that you would need, a program report, the draft form that you need. But also in the backend, uh, in working with your property owner to make sure they get through all of the process to determine and help determine that the project is compliant with the statute. So there are a couple of wrinkles in, in PACE that, uh, you know, are a bit odd. It's an energy efficiency financing program, so you do have to make sure, you know, it's an energy efficiency compliant project. So our role is really to step in, run the program on your behalf with your direction and for you.
And so to that point, and Todd or Dell, uh, how, how do you hope to use it for the work that Euclid is doing?
I will, I will defer to Dell's to the, the actual individual project information. Uh, I will say from, you know, our standpoint, we, we hope to put it in place so that it's useful not only for Euclid, but any of your other commercial property owners, uh, within the city of Adrian, whether, you know, current or new ones who may need to undertake a project. It's, you know, a tool for your economic development, uh, personnel. And once it's enacted, you, it's there, it's a good fit, you know, it's, it's great for a property owner. If it's not a good fit, yeah, we're happy to let them know and happy to push them towards some other areas of funding that, that might be more beneficial for them. So, you know, we're, we're here to, to answer questions for your property owners and, and see if this tool works for them. Dell, I'll turn it over to you for, for why it works for Euclid and what you're looking at.
Right, thank you Todd. You know, it's a good question, I'd like to give you the Euclid Health and Nutrition perspective. Part of moving into the Adrian facilities that Ventures used to own is we knew with the type of products that we made, that we were going to need to do some extensive remodeling and refurbishing of those facilities for us to be able to use those and meet the regulatory requirements that our industry, uh, is under. And one of the things that's very attractive about the PACE program to us, and it's really a two-fold to be honest. Uh, one is it helped us make some of the financial changes, uh, or to help us, I should say financially, to make some of the changes we need to make. A lot of our products, uh, need to be ran in a controlled environment. It's very important for the standpoint of a quality product as well as, uh, you know, preventing any kind of cross-contamination. And even the materials that we run themselves sometimes are sensitive to temperature. So to put in an HVAC system for us was a necessity for us to be able to, to move some of the products into the Adrian facility that we wanted to run. What's really key with that is the PACE program and we're talking somewhere around the neighborhood, uh, just off the top of my head as I'm glancing at numbers, but about $250,000 alone, just in HVAC for us to be able to get that facility prepared to run the, the type of products that we run. The other thing, the, the second piece of that is, is obviously we feel also is, is we can invest in better technology, more efficient technology and can be energy, you know, uh, conservationists if you will. We think that's a responsibility that's very important for us to do too, as a good area business, as a contributing, uh, you know, member of the community. Uh, the other thing is we know that the lighting that we had in the buildings was really not up to the standard, uh, that we needed again for the products that we have and what we're trying to promote. And the PACE program again allows us to come in and change out the lighting that we need to put in place. Again, the tune there as far as money is another 150 to 160,000 dollars. So, you know, even between just two of those projects, we're talking over $400,000. Uh, and again, that allows us with that kind of expenditure, that, that, those are high numbers for us, those are big numbers. With everything else we need to build out, uh, which is, you know, probably four times that, it'd give us the opportunity to have that financial support that we can get in that facility, make those changes, begin to come, become operational and begin to bring employment into the Adrian area with all of the additional people that we're going to need to hire with the new contracts we have. And then that gave us some time, if you will, through the PACE program to be able to pay that back that maybe conventional, you know, means would not have allowed us to do. Uh, there's even a couple of other things, I really don't want to mention those too deeply because I'm not sure how much pace will come in and help us. But, you know, we would like to even put in, uh, you know, some new air systems that can handle, you know, some of the air quality, uh, to be able to handle air compressors, to be able to generate air power for us. Uh, there's a roof that we desperately need to look at on Plant One, which was the smaller facility of the two that we bought. We bought Plant One and Two of the old Ventures buildings, but the roof we know is going to need replaced there. And, you know, it's going to be another 150 is the estimate that we had to do that. And we want to make sure, again, we want to do it responsibly with materials that are going to be better materials, are going to be more efficient and that are going to last longer. And, uh, that's really how, right now, Euclid Health and Nutrition feels that we can benefit from this PACE program. In fact, not only benefit from it, but we moved into this venture of buying these facilities knowing that we needed that, that support from PACE in order really to even be able to do this. That's why this, you know, meeting is very important for me and what you guys, the slide tonight's very important for our organization because really, we moved in believing that the PACE program, even though, you know, they can back things into it in a year or a year and a half or two or et cetera, we need to be able to do it now or it puts us into a real financial situation. But that's kind of the overview of how Euclid Health and Nutrition is looking at the PACE program. Any questions for clarification or Todd, is there anything you would like to add to that?
I, I have one question, this is Commissioner Watson, uh, for the, for the Euclid representative. Were you misled by the city that we were already part of the PACE program or, or, or did you buy it, buy the property or sign the property thinking that we would join in?
No, we, we were not misled by that at all. Uh, we were believed that, you know, we could go, work a good partnership and we're not afraid to put, you know, a token of faith out there, especially being new to the community. So, so no, Commissioner Watson, we, we were not misled by any degree at all.
Good, um, Greg, and I, and I see as Michelle scrolls through this document quite a bit, um, no cost, no involvement, city, local. No cost, no involvement, city, local government, and, and I missed it as we were coming through. What is the city or local government's role in this, other than declaring a base zone?
Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but first of all, we have to establish an area that's eligible for it. I think most places that have done that do that citywide. So that any property in the city would be potentially eligible to utilize the program, then on a site. That the basis, it's a little special assessment district. Those eligible improvements that they want to make, that are energy efficiency improvements. We agree to put a lien on the property and collect it as a special assessment over time. That gives the lender comfort, they can. Let's be say, I'll say borrow more than they otherwise could because of the security that is related to. Having that as a lien, and it's in fact a lien that really could never go away. It even survives, and Todd will correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it even survives tax foreclosure.
Just a, just a little bit of correction on that, and, you know, one of the ways that thankfully Michigan pays statute. Is extremely useful compared to some pay statutes around the country. The city will not be collecting unless you really, really want to. We highly recommend, there's a provision on their pay statute which allows for the pay lenders to have to invoice and collect their payments on their own. We would not recommend that you, you know, add it on to the tax roll or add it on to the tax bill unless you prefer that method. Most of these, we, we don't want to cause any more work or city personnel than we need to. So Greg's right in that the, the end product, you know, one product is that you create a PACE district. And just get it up and running and put it out into the world. The second product for an individual. Individual project itself, the, the city will have an approval that they will have to give. In the form of a special assessment agreement which will be entered into between the lender, the property owner. And the city, and it will create that, that lien against the property, it will create the special assessment. But the collection of it, you know, we, we recommend leaving that off to the lender to do. Should something go wrong and Euclid stop making payments, you know, the lender. Will give notice and then it would fall into a standard tax foreclosure process for, you know, past due assessment. Which typically is at the county level, so for the most part. Pass the, pass the district, and then as the individual projects come in, you know, if you're happy with them, if you like them, you're willing to enter into it. You create the assessments, we record it against the property and, and hopefully we, everybody ignores it for 25 years except for, or 20 to 25 years, except for Euclid. Gets billed and makes a payment twice a year.
This is Mayor Heath, is there ever a situation where, that you've run into where a city does not give approval for it? And why would be the reasoning for that?
Yeah, certainly, we've, we've had a few projects where, you know, we've brought them forth, you know, when we've heard about them. As they've come in, we've reached out to our jurisdictions and asked, you know, is this something that you'd be interested in? In one situation, it was frankly a type of property that the city was not sure. Or the county was not sure in that case, wouldn't be a good fit long term because it had a high turnover rate, it was a gas station. And, you know, they, they did not want to partner essentially with that property owner because frankly, it changed hands every five years. And there was fear that, you know, there would be a default that situation. And the city would end up with a piece of property now with a special assessment attached to it. And it would be harder to keep it on tax rolls as a viable property. Additionally, I know of. One gentleman in another county in Michigan who reached out to us, sounded like a really nice project. He had to put solar on a bunch of apartment buildings that he had, turns out. He owns a bunch of other businesses and was known very well by that county treasurer because he was notorious for not paying his taxes. And so, you know, that, that was an issue where, you know, when we, we, when we reached out, our, the authorized official that we dealt with was like, no. I deal with this gentleman enough every year to get his regular taxes, I can't believe he's going to pay anything additional. So, you know, it's, whether it's a, a property owner you don't want to work with, or whether it's the nature of the property or a concern with the property. We're happy if you tell us no. As much as if you tell us yes to move forward with it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh Dell, are there any other questions? Hold on, what, what is your ask of the city commission as it relates to this program?
Now I'll go ahead and field this one, you know, and we. We have talked with Euclid about their project. In addition to talking with some of the economic development people with the, the city of Adrian about this, and so it's been slowly developing. I know they're working currently with a, one of the contractors that we've put them in touch with to identify potential projects. You know, their ask at this time is, is that we move forward with establishing the district. It does not put the city, you know, from our standpoint, it's mainly Michigan, if you establish the district, it does not require you to take that additional step of approving the project right away. You know, it's, it's, but you have to build the infrastructure essentially first before you can worry about their individual project. And so at this point, to build that infrastructure out, it's a two step process, a three step process, if you will. The city will need to pass a resolution of intent to establish a district, which puts into the world a draft plan, draft program report. And establishes only a public hearing date. Once you hold the public hearing, you know, any comments that have come in, any concerns that the city would have with the document, you can make modifications. To the program report, and then the, the next action is passing a resolution to establish. So it's the two resolutions and a public hearing in between. And in the meantime, we have draft versions of the resolutions we can prepare and present, as well as the public. Or the program report, and we're happy to work with your staff and work with the commissioners and ask questions and comments that they may have to them.
So Mayor and Commissioners, is that something that you'd like staff to work on? In a position to present to you in the future?
Yes, I think it's an interesting.
Makes sense to me.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we're happy to do that. Anything else on this item?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the council again for giving us the opportunity to have a voice here, we're very excited about being a part of Adrian. So just wanted to pass that on to you good folks and say thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to thank Leaning Green for, you know, explaining that further and, and presenting that again and giving us some time to absorb that. It just, I thought it was very beneficial from, from the first time that we were presented with it. This time was much more beneficial, we've had time to look at it, it was, it was a good explanation to really help us absorb. The, the whole gravity of it, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, thanks Todd, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on on our pre-meeting agenda number three, I think Tamaris is going to handle this relates to. Our proposal for bringing blight prosecution back in house. Do I speak truth, Tamaris?
She's on mute.
I am on mute, sorry guys, you said, did you speak the truth, Greg?
Yes.
We'll see, we'll see. The portion about blight is pretty simple. We've been discussing how the in-house team has been doing, working with commercial blight in the area. You have seen that in the community and how we've been working with the Family Dollar Store and the gym that's over in that plaza. Also our recent work that we've been doing to work with the Adrian Mall ownership and have some enforcement in that area. So we've talked about how we can work together as a team to do the same, have the same type of effectiveness for residential blight. And how that may benefit the city overall. Greg and I have discussed it as well as our code enforcement department, and we're very sure that we can. Bring some value to the table and working together. We spoke with the Illinois County Prosecutor's Office and they are happy to relinquish their responsibilities with regard to blight over. And to the city, and we've looked at the contracts that are associated with that. And Marty Marshall at the county has also reviewed their contract and it would simply require the removal of one paragraph. That gives the county prosecutor the responsibility for bright, blight, sorry, and they have that now going in front of their. Criminal justice group for approval, and then it would go to the county commission if everyone is in agreement. In addition to that, I have met with Chief Emmerich today, and we talked about the electronic system. And we have discussed a way for everything to transition very smoothly and seamlessly. We've also spoken with the administrative staff over at the prosecutor's office on how that could happen. The requirements for us to take it back would be, as I said, the change to the prosecutor's contract to eliminate blight. And then a change to my contract to include it. Currently, my contract caps me at working no more than 30 hours per week, and I have averaged somewhere between 25 and 28 for the past year. We feel that if that cap could be increased by just two hours a week to 32. That would leave me anywhere from a five to seven hour window per week to put blight into my schedule. We don't know that I will reach that 32 hours or not, but we just want to have the flexibility. In cases where that does happen, and so that would be the change related to my contract would be to change the cap from 30 hours to 32 hours. And includes the responsibilities of blight. I've also been in contact with a couple of different people in the community who are interested in seeing some things done with blight. And have made arrangements to meet with them over the next couple of weeks, assuming that you all approve this proposal. And we would start working on a plan both in how we can effectively address residential blight. And different ways that we may find some financial resources to help the individuals who need to address it. And it's my understanding that there may even be some matching dollars out there, that if we can find some. Resources from a more private source, that there are some governmental resources that would match those dollars to help people who. Maybe not addressing the blight issues due to economic reasons, especially with everything that's going on with the COVID right now. So that's pretty much it on the, that topic, I'm happy to answer any questions. And if there are no questions, then we would send those two contracts before you at the next city commission meeting on the 17th for approval of that, that change. Questions do you have? I, no, nobody's asking, okay, that, that's it for that, Greg, do you want me to move on to adult use marijuana?
Yes, please.
Okay, trying to talk fast so I can get all this in, so we can have time for a public comment. So you'll see on the screen share that there is a chart up, and actually, Michelle, if you could switch that to the graphs. I'll be using those first, and the one that says medical and rec sales Michigan, that would be great. So basically, we've talked about in the past, the possibility of coming back to you with the proposal to open a window. For adult use applications again. At this time, we have had time to talk with and see where everyone's at with regards to our current permit holders in the city. And how it may impact them if they're unable to acquire an adult use permit. We have looked at the current trends in the state of Michigan, and you'll see from this first graph that's up. That medical and recreational sales in Michigan obviously have been going up. But if you also look towards the bottom of the page there, in March of this year, which is when our application window was open. Sales were a little over 30 million for medical and 21.9 for recreational, just about. Eight thousand, nine thousand apart, if you look now at the amounts in June, you'll see that. Medical's gone up by about 15, whereas adult use has gone up by 22, so the adult use. Sales are climbing more quickly than the medical, and it's expected that it will surpass medical in the very near future. Michelle, if you could go to the next graph, please, with active licenses. You'll also see similar trends with the active licenses by category, so in March of 2020. There were 228 active medical provisioning center licenses and only 82 adult use or recreational. Whereas in June, there are 264 medical and 123 adult use. So you saw an increase of 36 in medical and 41 in adult use. Again, showing that the trend for adult use seems to be that it's climbing a little bit faster than medical. Next one, please, Michelle. Thank you, this graph shows you the number of cardholders, and you will see that this is quickly declining. And this indicates that a lot of people are not keeping their medical cards any longer because they can purchase through adult use or recreational. You'll see that from, can I say, from last year to now, this has decreased by over 30,000. And the anticipation is that that will continue to decrease and. Those predictions are based on what's happened in other states that have legalized marijuana for both medical and recreational. And what they see happen is that a lot of people will just shift to recreational. But the medical is still necessary to have it in place because you will have people who are uncomfortable with the stigma of using recreational. Or people who need to get medical for children who are under the legal age for recreational, so. If you're under the age of 21, you can't get recreational, so the medical cards are still necessary, but tend not to be used as much. For the purpose of acquiring the marijuana. Michelle, the last one is caregivers. You also see that there is a decline in the number of caregivers and that. Has gone down by nearly 5,000 caregivers in the past year. And we also know that currently they are phasing out the ability for caregivers to provide product to licensed facilities. That does not mean the caregivers will completely go away by any means, but the MRA is not going to allow them to provide product to licensed facilities. Because they want to be able to carefully regulate the licensed facilities. Michelle, if you could go back to the one with all the bright colors that you had, thank you. So I put together a list for you to show you where we're at right now within the city of Adrian and how that would potentially change. If we were to open a short term window, and then I also have. Just a quick proposal on how we would execute that if you were to give us permission to open another window. So you'll see here that for standalone provisioning centers, we currently have six that are licensed. And they are licensed for both medical and adult use, they have dual purpose permits, you'll see that in the notes at the right side. Next, you'll see that there are current permit holders, but they are unlicensed, meaning they have their permit for medical. But they have not gotten their full state license yet. Currently, all these permit holders are under notification that we'll be enforcing our 180 day. Requirement in the ordinance for them to get fully licensed, the deadline for that after the impact of COVID is September 14th. So in these situations, I've indicated whether we as a team here at the city feel that they will get licensed for medical by the 14th of September. And if they do, whether or not they would be adult use eligible. We have been in close contact with regard to how their build outs are going, we're looking at whether they've pulled permits. We're looking at where they're at in the process to make those determinations. So you can see that under the current permit holders that are unlicensed, they're. So you can see that under the current permit holders that are unlicensed, there are not any that we predict would be ready. With medical by September fourteenth in the B one, B two districts. But there is one that we predict might be eligible to apply for adult use and that is based upon the fact that the owners of that company. Own more than one company and they would become eligible under their other company. The state requires that they have. A medical license and then they can apply for adult use at any of their locations. So if they become eligible at their other location. Then they would also be eligible to apply for adult use at their provisioning center. So that would be a potential of adding one possible provisioning center license in the B one, B two. With regard to overlay provisioning centers, which most of you know, need to be attached to a grow. We show that there is one there that we anticipate would become eligible by September fourteenth. And the others that are there. Two of them decided not to reapply for their provisioning center permit and so those permits expired this past Friday, July thirty-first. And one of those you'll see listed there is at risk and there's a one eighty and that means that they're at risk of enforcement. Based upon the one hundred and eighty day provision and. We don't anticipate right now that they will complete the requirements by September fourteenth and it's likely that. There could be a resolution before you for their permit to become void or lapsed due to the fact that they've not completed. The requirements in a timely manner. So if you could move to the grower section, please. This is set up the same way. Currently, we only have one grower in the entire city that is fully licensed for both medical and adult use. They have dual purpose. Then you'll see the list of all those who have current permits. And I count five that we believe would probably be fully licensed by September fourteenth. And six that would be eligible to apply for adult use. And you'll notice that one, North Coast Cannabis, has a no under medical by nine fourteen, but a yes for adult use. And that's because they only applied for an adult use grow based on their current licensing for medical sales at their provisioning center. They were eligible. So they did not actually apply for a medical grow and that's why they would not have to obtain a medical license by nine fourteen. You'll also see that there are four companies here who are at risk based upon their progress so far. And as we move into processors, these four companies, I believe, are the exact same who also have a permit for processor. And so you'll see that they're at risk with their processor permit as well. Again, I'm sorry, there's only two there. Again, under processors, we have one that is currently fully licensed. And then. We have one that is going through the final part of phase two right now to get fully licensed. We expect that they will be licensed by the state in the next seven to ten days likely. We have another that did not reapply, so their permit expired. You'll see the next two are attached to a grow. And we do anticipate that they will be ready in time and then the next two that are at risk and the final one. Again, it should say combined with the grow and I apologize that I did not get that in the notes. So there'd be a potential for four additional processors. And finally, we have the safety compliance facility category where we have one facility in the entire city that is a safety compliance facility. They're currently licensed for medical. They are not licensed for adult use because they were not licensed back in March in order for them to apply. But they are eligible from a state level right now for adult use and. So they would fall into this category of being able to apply and for them, this is a very imperative situation. Because approximately eighty-five percent of the product that's getting tested these days is adult use. So if they're left only to be able to test medical from now until next summer. That could be detrimental not only to them, but to our entire cannabis industry. Because we have all of these growers who would like to be able to utilize local resources to get their testing done. And all of these provisioning centers who it would make it easier for them if things can be done locally. So it will be a very, very important issue for the testing center to be able to get adult use eligible. Michelle, if you can go down to the last page for me. So here, I've just put kind of an overview or recap. So currently, we have for dual-purpose licensed facilities, we have six provisioning centers. One grower, one processor. Then as a single-purpose licensed facility, we have one and that is a safety compliance center. If we were to open a special application window for. These companies that we're talking about, we would potentially see an increase in the number of dual-purpose licensed facilities to eight provisioning centers. Seven growers, five processors, and the safety compliance center would be dual-purpose licensed. The growers and the processors are often in the same location, so several of those are combined. And the two additional provisioning centers. One would be in the B one, B two, one would be in the overlay. I think that the clerk and I counted, we would. End up accepting a total of maybe nine applications through this process. Finally, I don't think Michelle has this slide, but I have emailed you guys. In the past, a couple of weeks ago about what that proposal would look like and I just want to recap that really quickly that. Once we've passed the September fourteenth enforcement deadline, we would then wait a couple of weeks just to give room for grace. I don't want to be such a stickler that if someone says, we got our CVO from the city on September thirteenth and the state can't come out until the following week to inspect. And then they miss a window again. So we would give a couple of weeks to make sure everyone has their ducks in a row. And then on October fifth, Monday, October fifth, we would propose that a special application window be open. It could be anywhere from two weeks to four weeks. Greg and I have both discussed it. We're fine with both options. So it can go from the fifth of October till the sixteenth or it could go until the thirtieth. And there would be six requirements in order for them to apply. They must have current local medical marijuana facility permit and state medical license that are in good standing. They must have the ability to obtain a state adult use license within the time constraints that are set forth in the local ordinance and no additional extensions. Would be provided other than what's in the code without good cause, meaning that what we've seen over the past year or two. Is a lot of people who have applied and then kind of taken their time and and now we're having to enforce on that hundred and eighty day clause. There's a hundred and eighty days provided in the in the statute as well as an extension of up to a hundred and twenty days. So there's really a three hundred day window and if they're already licensed for medical, this should not be an issue. The state is issuing adult use licenses within just a couple of months. So we would require that they be in strict compliance with that. Any incomplete application would be denied per our code. We expect that they know what's required of an application and they've already gotten permits with us before and we're going to put that on their responsibility to make sure. That they have everything in. We would only accept applications from current permit holders that want to convert from a single use to a dual purpose. That's the only type that'll be accepted at this time and there would not be any additional applications accepted outside of that. Any application that doesn't meet those requirements would not be processed and all applicants would be required to sign an affidavit of understanding. Regarding those requirements and including acknowledgement that their five thousand dollar fee is non-refundable. So that would limit, like I said, this would be basically a special application window just for those individuals who already. Have their permit for medical, have reached the goal of getting fully licensed by the state for medical and opening their doors to the public, providing jobs. And being a benefit to the community and this would be to help support them in being able to. Maintain their businesses and continue to grow by adding adult use. The last thing I would point out to you is that the excise tax that we do have the benefit of collecting somewhere in the future comes from adult use. It's an additional ten percent excise tax and it comes from the sale of adult use through provisioning centers. So if we if we as municipality want to see the benefit of that in the future, it's imperative that we're supporting these businesses now so that they can thrive. Because that amount of money that the city sees in revenue from that will be based upon the amount of sales through the provisioning centers. Within our municipality and we will receive a percentage of that. So we want, I think the best thing to do is to help support them in in growing. I'm going to cut myself off there. I know there are some individuals who do have public comments tonight specifically on this topic. So I want to make sure I leave room, but I'll be happy to answer any questions commissioners have as people are are making their points as well. Thank you, Greg.
I have minutes left, Mayor, if you want to invite public comments.
Yes. I now, it is now time for a public comment. So if there's any public comment, please state your name and address and go ahead.
I am Steph Nysley. I am a member of WPL Industries and Main Street Products. Kind of a familiar face. I wanted to get on here and introduce our project manager, Mark Guzniak. He helped put some of the graphs together that Tamara spent over with you, so I will let him explain and provide comment on this topic.
Hey, thanks, everybody. Mark Guzniak. I live in Newago, Michigan, so I'm on the other side of the state. But I appreciate the the time tonight and I'll keep it brief because I know you're you're under a time constraint. You know, and we obviously have been monitoring this this shift in the market that's coming. And we feel that it's it's really important for a couple of reasons. I think the the comments that Ms. Henigan made were were spot on about sustainability over the long term. For businesses to be able to 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 meet the shift in the market and the demand. There was actually one week in June where medical sales actually exceeded. Or I'm sorry, adult use sales actually exceeded medical sales. So I would expect more than likely in July or August when CMA reports are out that we will see that exceeding. I also think when you see the active license piece and still see those licenses on medical increasing and that's solely because that's the only window to get an adult use license. I know the comment was made that the MRA turns the adult use licenses around very quickly, usually thirty-five to forty-five days. But again, I go back to what I would say for our business is the most important piece is the sustainability. Over over time to be able to meet the market demand and the shift and that means capital investment, that means jobs. And retention and growth. One of the things that the adult use licensing. And how it differs from medical is the capitalization requirements that are required by the state. The cat, there are virtually no capitalization required requirements as part of the state licensing process for adult use. And this really sort of frees up a lot of capital to invest in businesses, to add employees, to add product lines and do all those sorts of things. So having that window in place, which we absolutely support. Would be a very, a very big help to our business and others as well. The tax issue, I think, that Ms. Henigan hit on as well. Again, that's yet to be seen how that will be calculated or exactly what will come out of that, but participation in the adult use. Market definitely contributes to that percentage and proration for the local community. So just to summarize very quickly for our medical marijuana businesses in Adrian and in other places. To be sustainable over the long term, we'll have to adapt and be nimble and agile. And with the city's help, we would very much appreciate the ability to do that and continue to move forward in Adrian. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is Dave Moorhead with North Coast Testing Labs. I was on several weeks ago thanking the the community for your support and getting the lab up and running. I just wanted to share our story a little bit if I could quickly. I know you have a timetable here, but. You know, we have a lab in the state of Ohio and when we came to Michigan, we searched many communities before we settled on Adrian. And one of the key reasons we settled on Adrian was we came to all the meetings that Tamara's held and the community held. And it was clear to us that Adrian was going to be progressive and supportive to the medical community when we came to the, when we came up for our license. Since that time, it's you've proven to be nothing but that. You guys have been totally supportive all the way through. I felt you were very instrumental in us getting our license. We're in a unique position because we're one of twelve labs in the state. That are licensed for both medical and there's only four licensed right now for recreational. The shift has taken place, I think, a lot faster than even the state anticipated it to take place. And if you look at the numbers today, the numbers that Tamara's presented are actually expounded when you look at. What the growers are establishing as their plants. When they put a plant in the ground for seed. That plant has to be declared medical or recreational. And the largest percentage right now by far is recreational and or adult use. And the other is is that the facilities that are already growing medical. If they have that product on their shelves for thirty days, they're allowed to take it then and convert it to adult use if it has not been used or sold. So it's a, it's a very unique shift that's taking place very quickly. And I think if you look back this last year, it's been unique to say the least in the market. You know, it took us two years to come to the state, get the facility built, get it up and running and validated. And at this point, we're watching a market shift where we're questioning, we actually had growth plans to double and then triple the size of our lab. We built out the lab right from the very start to actually triple the size of the equipment and people in the lab. And right now, we're looking at it and saying, if if the shift continues without the support of the city to open up. The adult use side in the fall here, we're seriously looking at just trying to stay alive until we can get there in the spring. So the shift is very unique. I think this year has been very unique in that we missed our window. Our plan was to absolutely be up operational so we could get our medical and then follow through and get our recreational or adult use after that. But because of the window and the COVID, we were pushed back several weeks, several months. And then ultimately, we were outside that window. We have our pre-qualification already done with the state. So we're ready to go today. If the city said go, we could get our adult use and support the community. The one thing I'd like to say is what we do that's a little different than other labs, not just in the state, but around the country. We've taken the approach that if if somebody fails a test, they failed it for a reason. And so our plan is what we do is we go back and we and we've done this in Ohio very successfully. We have over eighty percent of the market in the state of Ohio. And the reason for that is as we go back, we help them figure out their problem and why they failed what they failed and we help them.
Sorry, we're past our time to start the regular meeting, but I would say, Mayor, I would encourage. Not only those who wanted to speak on the marijuana issue, but any other public comment, if they hang out for your regular meeting, there'll be another opportunity for public comment at the end of that. And the public is allowed to address the commission about any topic that affects the city at that time. So I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Moorhead, but I got to get you moving, Mayor Heath.
All right, may I get a motion to adjourn the pre-meeting?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pre-meeting is adjourned. We will begin our regular meeting. And one, a few seconds here. Are we good to go, Commission?
Yes.
I call to me, I called, sorry, I called to order the meeting of the Adrian City Commission for August third, two thousand twenty. If everyone will please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible. one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and this for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the July twentieth, two thousand twenty regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve. Board.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the July twentieth, two thousand twenty special meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty special meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve.
Board.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
I move we pay the vouchers as presented.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
Special Order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of a social district in the downtown area. I I now call to order the public hearing.
So I think we're working on getting the map of the proposed social district up there.
All right. Yep.
Maybe for the benefit of the public, I can just explain that the proposal is to have what's called a social district. New legislation that authorized all my employees in Michigan essentially allows merchants to have liquor licenses to sell alcoholic beverages to go, especially designated containers in that district. The district as proposed is shown on the map that's on the screen. It's bounded by Front Street on the north, Broad Street on the east, Church Street on the south, and goes over to where Mommy and Church intersect and then comes back to Winter to go on back up to Front. So that's the area which would be demarcated by signs. We we have, in fact, some samples of what those signs might look like to share. Like could be different than that. We would think that we would partner with the D D A and branding for the area. But our D B W can make those signs and houses that area. In any of that, we've we provided notice to all the property owners and occupants of property within the district that includes downtown residents and business owners in the proposed district of tonight's public hearing. As you directed, this is not a required public hearing under the statute, but you would indicated you would like to hear from those who would be most immediately affected or considering a resolution to adopt the district.
Mayor, may I speak?
Go ahead.
David Thomas, forty five eleven Marathon Heights Court. As part of the D D A board, I presented this at the last pre meeting. And I just want to say thank you to the city and the administration and to the commission for working with us on the D D A and creating this area or this district. I think this will be a great benefit to all of our downtown businesses, just not from from an economic standpoint. And also, I think when it comes to retail recruitment for the future of our downtown area as well. So I just want to say thank you for your due diligence and I appreciate your support. And us from the D D A would be willing to help in any way possible. Thank you.
Mayor Heath.
Go ahead.
Yes, Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. I wholeheartedly support this as an owner of two buildings downtown. My only comment would be the preliminary signage that I saw doesn't excite me very much. And I hope we can maybe go through a more excitable redesign. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay. Can I comment again?
Go ahead. It's it's a it's a public hearing. I do believe.
Okay, I just want to let you know that we are working on some a logo for the for the social district. Our hopes, our plans right now is to call it DARA, which is Downtown Adrian Refreshment Area. And we're working with somebody in regards to with the branding. And we really look forward to working with the D P W as well in regards to getting the signage up and moving forward as well.
I'm not hearing any other comments. Are there any more? I'm going to give it a second here and then I'm going to close the hearing out.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
This is Al Wilkerson. I live in Canton, six one six four Gloucester. I own the building at one twenty five East Mommy and also the Governor Crossville Tea Room. Dave's did a great job in talking to building owners and businesses. My only concern were the hours. I thought eleven AM was pretty early. I like the ten, uh, ten PM ending. And will this be full go or will there be a transition period to do like two or three months to see how it goes and then reevaluate? But my main concern was the was it earlier? I can't imagine eleven o'clock on a Wednesday morning, so I'm going to walk around. But those are my concerns.
Thank you.
So Mayor, for clarity, I believe the proposed hours are noon to PM. Oh, that would be every day of the week.
It was noon?
Okay.
Yes.
And what I read was that we can, we have the ability to change it at any time as the commission. We just have to vote on it again. It's not permanent. Is that correct, Greg?
It's not permanent. I think if you do change it, then you have, then you do have to have a public hearing. But subject to that, you can amend it or revoke it.
I think anything to help the downtown is welcome, you know? And I know other other cities are doing it. It's been very successful and
I'd like to see it start.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts, one of the things that we did add into the plan that Greg put together was that there's an opportunity for individual places to have their own security if they were beginning to have any type of issues, but also an opportunity that if there was an issue going on in one particular place, that we could require that they have their own security before it would go to a step of removing their ability to participate. But we tried to build in some safeguards so that if we do start to see any type of problems, we've got some different avenues to take before we reach a point of, say, having to revoke or go to the liquor authority to help revoke someone's social districting permit. But hopefully, we won't have any of those type of issues, but we are kind of trying to think out of the box and make sure that we have a plan in place for in the event that any of that happens.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Mathis. Live at seven twenty four Alexander Drive. I also have similar concerns with the time. Every city that I know that has something like this is very enjoyable, but they usually have like kind of one way entrances, one way access police enforcement. It seems like to have that monitored from eleven to ten would be a lot. But I do think that it's good as long as we kind of have some safeguards. Do we know if our county or city police are equipped to handle this new idea or how what their support is of it?
Greg, do you want to answer that?
Vince just came out.
Should change.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
Speak to that.
Sorry, Mayor, I can I can respond to that. I would say that resources permitting, we we would be fine with that. Not being expected to be present, you know what I mean? As on a call basis, we could handle that. But as far as policing each individual business or or passing through and having contact with each patron, I don't think we're equipped to deal with that. I do like the safeguards that are built in. I don't expect that we will see that many problems. Frankly, the people that are going to break those types of rules are already doing that now, if you if you know what I mean. So I think we're going to be fine with that. But I do like the ability to change. I do like the safeguards and I think we can adapt as we go along.
Thank you.
Not hearing any more comments. I am going, I call this public hearing, I'm closing this public hearing. And we're going to move on now to our regular agenda. Resolution R twenty dash one thirty nine is from administration. It is a resolution to establish a city of Adrian's social district. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I have a, I have a comment.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. I discussed this in the pre meeting that Mr. Thomas was at. And like Mr. Wilkinson, I have a concern about the hours. I've mentioned that you know, I'd be more comfortable with, you know, four to ten, three to ten. I just think noon is a little early to be starting the thing on a daily basis. The other concern that that I have is the ability for someone to carry a drink out of the bar and then enter a private store that's, you know, doesn't sell alcohol. And I understand you can't take the drink from one bar to another. But we still have a number of retail stores downtown. And I'm uncomfortable with the fact that there's nothing to prevent those stores from, you know, from having visitors come in that are, you know, have drinks in their hands, you know, could potentially spill it over the merchandise and that kind of stuff. So just want to mention that and thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Watson, go ahead.
In response to Commissioner Gauss's concerns, why in in, you know, and a genuine question, why can't a storefront owner limit just like they do in so many other towns who can come to their store? So I mean, you can put out that no drink, no candy, no kids, no dogs, that kind of stuff. I mean, it's their own rules. It's their own store that they could be in, right?
I absolutely agree with that, except, you know, we also have a rules about having to wear masks into their store. And that always ends up with a confrontation, so.
But but in the same right, I mean, they've got to stick up for themselves. I mean, we can't put a police at every door.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I would, I would just be more comfortable if we had a a rule that prohibited from walking into to private stores. That's all I'm saying.
But but to touch that, there is a rule from the governor that you have to walk in with a mask. And so does that do any good? So I mean, if it's not for, if it's not enforceable, why why put it out there? The second thing is, and I know there's been an expressed concern about the start time. I don't have that same concern. I guess I think there's going to be minimum exposure on the on the early drinking time. And this isn't necessarily going to change people's drinking habits. Or or they're, you know, i- is it really going to encourage people to come down at noon versus coming down at four o'clock for a happy hour? I don't I don't think it is, but that's just my gut.
I always respect your opinion, Commissioner Watson.
As do.
I would also like to comment on that that on the time, I I think when we had our pre meeting discussion that the basis for that was being that it's a, it's the same time, no matter what day it is. Therefore, there is no confusion. And I agree with that because I do think that we get into a situation of everybody having to remember if every day has a different time to it, even if it's, you know, weekends or a specific different time. You're gonna, you're gonna run into some issues with that if you're changing the times depending on the day. So I I I do remember that from our pre meeting discussion, just putting that out there.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to comment.
Commissioner Hou, go ahead.
Thank the D D A on their hard work on getting this to us for consideration. I agree with Commissioner Watson when it comes to the start time. It does not concern me. I think it, I think that, you know, the ending time is more important than the start time, in my opinion. Like I made a comment at the pre meeting last time that nothing good happens after midnight usually. So I think that, you know, my sister living in the city of Toledo, she and her teacher friends would always go out right after, right after class. Got out and and enjoy some cocktails, walk around and and support the local businesses downtown. And 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 she was home by seven o'clock at night. And so I think the people that have different schedules, I think, it gives a little more, little bit more flexibility. And again, I I feel it's a lot about personal responsibility. I mean, um, if somebody's going to get tuned up on a on a Monday at noon, I mean, they're going to do it regardless of if we have this, if we adopt this or not. So fall in support of it. I think it's the D D A's vision is to get activity downtown. I think this helps that effort. Anytime we can get folks mingling it out of businesses and supporting those businesses, I think it's a, it's a good thing. So.
Any other commissioner comments?
Mayor Heath, do you mind if I address the concern of Commissioner Gauss had?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that I can understand your concern. I don't think that we have the authority as municipality to make a rule that says that you can't go into a business at all if you have alcohol. And but I do think that Commissioner And, but I do think that Commissioner Watson is, is spot on when he says that the stores can make their own rules. Oftentimes you see businesses that have a sign that say no outside beverage or food allowed. And you may even, Commissioner Gus, talk with David Tom, Thomas about the possibility of there being maybe a DARA participating business sticker that could be placed on the windows so that those businesses who do want individuals to come in and they do want to use this as a way to draw patrons to their business have a way of identifying themselves. But I, if we made a rule that said that you can't go in and that would limit those who do want the business to be drawn to them as well. And there's two sides that we have to consider, but as a government entity, I don't think there's a rule that we can put in place with regard to that, but we can certainly do our best to help the businesses to acclimate if this resolution passes.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-140 is for Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to authorize the acceptance of recommended changes to the Consumers Energy Contract to provide seven energy efficient lighting installations in the city of Adrian and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-141 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to designate funds from the City of Adrian Oil and Gas Royalties Trust for the Kiwanis Trail Expansion Project. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to, move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Roberts, go ahead.
So at our last, I believe it was our last pre-meeting, if not two pre-meetings ago, we discussed having an application process. And I just wanted to let everyone know that is still something we are looking at, but this is a project that has been discussed for, I'm guessing about a year now, a couple of times on and off. And we didn't feel like it was something that we should, or I don't feel, I shouldn't speak to it for anyone else. I don't feel like it's something we should hold up just because halfway through the project, we decided to do, we, we changed rules on this project. So just wanting to let the public know that we are still looking at doing an application process to be able to use the oil and gas funds.
I'd like to say that I'm excited to see this project start on the east side. It will be a big improvement. Partner with another entity or group, that's a good thing for Adrian.
I could piggyback on Commissioner Strayer's comments. I think that when the oil and gas amendment was brought to the voters, I think this is one of those projects that really is what it was intended for, brick and mortar. We can see what the money is being spent on. I think it's a great public-private partnership. I think it's, uh, three entities, the city, Kiwanis, and, and, and private money to expand the trail, to get it to the east side, get, get our, get that great resource so all of our citizens can enjoy it. I'm excited about this and I fully support it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-142 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate for 310 North Locust Street for a period of 15 years. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-143 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve the sale of property to the Lenawee Humane Society and authorize the mayor and city clerk to authorize a purchase agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Uh, Mayor Heath.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Russell Fryman. Um, I live at 1457 Henninger Way in Adrian. Um, I come to you as the next door neighbor to the property in question. Thank you for letting me speak today. I must first apologize for coming to you at this late date. When we heard about this project last September, our immediate, our neighborhood immediately began discussions on what actions we could take. But when word came in October that the project was canceled, we stepped back, but kept watch on both the Humane Society pages and the local paper where we expected to receive word of any resumed negotiations. Those never came. And so it was only happenstance that we came across the city agenda two days ago and so began our renewed discussion on our part. I believe the sale is not in the best interest of the city of Adrian. It represents a poor return on the million dollars spent for its acquisition. And after consideration of the development costs, the $80,000 is a giveaway price with no hope, with actually zero hope of any return. Indeed, it will be a detriment to investment. Having been dormant for so long, the corridor between Adrian and Tecumseh and the Irish Hills is finally growing and it's growing more valuable. The Wood Farm is the last property, the last city property on that corridor. And that property is competing with property to the north of us. What developer, if given the choice, would choose to locate their restaurant, hotel or housing development next to a commercial kennel? None that I know of, and those that do would ask for a steep discount. The city is giving up revenue. This is not an agricultural area. This is a development property immediately adjacent to a quiet rural residential neighborhood. Everyone, not just in our neighborhood, should be concerned about this issue. While our neighborhood will suffer property value decline, the city taxpayers are going to be paying for it well because they will be on the hook for the loss of the future tax base as well as the additional costs for the maintenance and upkeep of the development that they're going to have to pay for. Now, I've sent you all emails with these points, points that you may not have considered here before. I realize that my plea is coming late and ask again for your forgiveness in light of the reasons given, but my objections are real and I ask you to vote no, though I know that many, if not all of you, have already committed to say yes. Please, at the very least, if you cannot say no today, please push this vote out to the next meeting to consider the points we have made and to give us all, the city, the Humane Society and the neighborhood, an opportunity to reach an understanding, if not an accommodation, that preserves as much of the opportunity as possible. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-144 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve a performance agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated for the Energy Conservation Project and authorize the city administration to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Did you get Commissioner Strayer, Robin, for the motion or?
It was Strayer, Strayer and Hou, but who, did anybody second that?
Not yet.
It's a lie.
Okay, so who's, so Lad's going to second it then?
No, Commissioner Hou is going to second it and Commissioner here is who gave the motion.
There you go, okay.
Okay. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-145 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement along with the equipment schedule and payment schedule related to the Energy Conservation Project with Bank of America. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-146 is from the City Commis, Commission. It is a resolution to interview Tracy Byard for the position of city administrator to be held at a special meeting prior to the final candidate interviews. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Watson, go ahead.
I'm glad that we're able to do this. It's unfortunate that a family emergency prevented her from being part of the original round, but it's, I think this is the right thing for us to do.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Now it is time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Ken Tilkars, 110 South Locust. Later on in the week, there's going to be an election and it's to amend the city charter. I don't feel that elected officials should be appointing someone to this position. It should be an elected position. And whether we have to wait a couple of months for an election or we have to deal with a tie vote, that's kind of how life, life sets you up. Under our current system of government, we have two major political parties, the Republicans and the Democrats. This system of government evolved to provide some sort of balance by having a Republican-controlled council or a Democratic-controlled council. And in event of a unanimous control by either party, allowed the other party an opportunity to elect a candidate with differing opinions. The City of Adrian Charter Amendment takes our voting rights away and puts the decision in the hands of a party-dominated group to decide who will make decisions reserved for an elected official. On a very high level, at the federal government, it would be liking having Congress appoint the next president. At the state level, it could be compared to having a Republican or Democratic-controlled senate or House of Representatives appoint the Attorney General or Secretary of State. Again, going back to the city of Adrian, this charter amendment takes away our individual rights to vote for an elected mayor or city councilperson. And I encourage you to vote no on the Adrian City Charter Amendment.
Mayor Heath, it's Lynn Punnett, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I know you guys are all really busy, especially with these special meetings you're having with districting and the preparation and planning and all that's involved in interviewing for the critical position of our city administrator. And you're running businesses and working and have a personal life. And amidst all of that, I just really hope that blight is still top of your list. So as God would have it right now, I have time on my hands. I don't know if that's a blessing or a curse in your mind, but either way, I've spent a lot of time in the last month reading and listening and learning more about blight. And I think what I've concluded is that we all need a lot more education, including myself, on this subject. So I have pages of absolutely outstanding links of information and copies of articles on blight. But I asked Ms. Dewey to forward just one thing for your review. It was a webinar. I hope at least some of you were able to watch it or will make time to watch it. The panel on the webinar includes our nation's, some of our nation's experts on blight and in their respective fields. And I think what I was reminded of the most when I watched it again was the key to preventing blight and then, or eliminating blight is really a strong economic development plan. So, um, it's all ties together. So I don't want any comments that I ever make to give you the impression that I don't support a second code enforcement position. I realized a long time ago that this city needed more than one person in that role. But my point two weeks ago, and again tonight, is that that is not a blight plan. I was really encouraged to hear Ms. Henigan's comments at the pre-meeting, some of the work they're doing, doing to take that work back from the prosecutor's office. But I, I just want to say, I hope that you're able to watch the webinar and read the paper that I sent. I want to again thank Lenaway Now for helping me gain access to some of the best information that is out there. And I look forward to your comments. Thank you very much.
Mayor Heath, David Thomas, 4511 Marathon Heights Court. I just want to say. I just want to say thank you again for your support of the social district and the DARA project that, that we'll all be working together on to institute. I just want to address Commissioner Gauss's thoughts when it comes to time. And I just want to let you know that we will work with all the other downtown business owners to work with puddingage or stickers to make those businesses DARA friendly. So whatever you need from us to help finalize everything, the, myself and the DDA will be more than happy to help. So thanks again for everything. We really appreciate your swift action on this. We really support it. Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot to say I'm Lynn Punnett from Tecumseh.
Marcy Cornell, may I say something?
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Marcy Cornell. I'm the Executive Director of the Lenaway Humane Society. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank each and every one of the Commissioners who worked very hard and carefully considered our proposal and did their own research to decide whether or not this was the right place. The Commissioners asked for fair market value, although no one was sure what that was. The Lenaway Humane Society jumped into action, got fair market value price for the property and offered that up. And the Commissioners accepted that to allow the Lenaway Humane Society to realize their dream. We've been providing services in Lenaway County for 99 years without any federal, local, or city funding. And we are the resource for the entire community. And we look forward to providing more services and meeting the needs of our community and the animals that need us. So thank you so much.
This is Katie Morgan, 365 March Drive. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners as well for their vote regarding the Lenaway Humane Society purchase. And I look forward to this hopefully being a future relationship with the city and the Humane Society. So thank you very much.
Not hearing any more public comment. I'm going to move on. Are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Strayer, you're muted. There you go.
I do have one brief comment. I would like to respond to Lynn Punnett. I did watch the webinar. I found it very informative. There was an awful lot of information there. I really think I'll have to go back and listen to it again. An hour and a half webinar, that's a lot of info. I also want to thank you for reaching out to Lenaway Now on this matter. That's really important to me. I think it's important to the rest of the Commissioners that people engage Lenaway Now since we have outsourced our economic development to them. And I'm, I was really happy that you have talked with them. So I've got Mayor.
Are there any other Commissioner comments? Not hearing any. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Halt and Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.